Hey guys, welcome to Town Hall. This is gonna be a new adventure that we do. A little free class for everyone. This is a good place to take notes. If you have your phones or write, old school writing down. That's what I like to do. This is a good time. I'm gonna also record it and post it. So you'll be able to watch it again. But we're gonna dive into some of the whys of what we do. So you might see me on Facebook using these boxes and the buckets. And it's kinda weird. What are we doing exactly? What's the point? Hey, this Ellie's here. She likes this game. She can help us. So you can see we got different sizes. We got a little small fry box. So this is for the little dogs or maybe a dog that's a little nervous. And they're just starting on something. We got the next size up. Chad made these. So it's handy to have a carpenter partner. So there's the next size up. It's just tall enough. This is what your average bucket might look like, right? So if you got, go to the dollar store, find yourself a, hey. Find yourself a bucket. I like buckets cuz they're easy to clean. Clean them out. Flower pot. So just a simple flower pot from Home Depot. I think you can get two for 10 bucks or something. Or just a one, just a cleaning bucket from Home Depot or from the dollar store. It doesn't have to be fancy. It doesn't have to be expensive. You might start with a small flower pot you have in your yard. I think Matt was using a flower pot in his yard for awhile. And then I just let him borrow one of the boxes. So he's been practicing. And then Velvet comes to day camp. So she's been working on getting in. She's a good example. She's too, she's afraid of this big box cuz it's just a little too high on purpose. It's just, just enough to make the average dog be like, oh, what the heck? So what it's gonna do is make your dog a problem solver. So what this does, where it's easy to get in, it gets them liking the box. So it doesn't have to be fancy. It doesn't have to be a heavy box that's fancy made like this. It can be your Amazon box. It could be, you know, those containers that they used to give for recycling? I think that's what Debbie uses for Hank cuz Hank's a big guy. So if you have a German Shepherd, even though he can get into the, he got into this, right? Didn't he then? Didn't he get, he got, he can get into this? Yeah. So with mealtime games or with anything we do, I really want you to think about the way you layer stuff. So you're gonna have how much you teach your dog. So let's say, these are all, this will be all the things that we're gonna teach our dog. And this is gonna be how long we do it for. Right? So this is time. See if I can write it upside down. And these are, we'll start listing them. So now, what we do, you can start with some small stuff and not understand the depth of them. Stuff like this. I'll, I give these to every new person that walks in. I can tell who's still doing these exercises and who stopped because my dog will eat out of it. I'm done. It's not done. Talk to me. There's so many different levels to this game and to all these things. So we can keep progressing and we can keep, keep growing. So what we're gonna teach our dog is to problem solve. This box is just a little too high. So to problem solve to get in it, they're gonna put one of their legs in it. And then they might figure out to put both their legs in it. And that's gonna give them more leverage to reach the food that's in it. And not have to stretch and hurt their, hurt their chest and be uncomfortable. Uncomfortable makes you change something about what you're doing. If they don't have any food drive, these games won't work. So if your dog is one that eats out of their bowl and they eat about three quarters of their food and then they leave the rest, or they're a grazer, it means they live in abundance. It's free. They've never had to go to the fridge and open it and be like, man, we don't have any food. It's gonna be a ramen noodle kinda week, you know? So everybody needs to go through that once in awhile so that they can value what they have. So with dogs, we wanna make their lives very cushy and very fun and comfortable. And what we do is we make them weak and unable to solve problems. So instead of working on the big stuff, the hard stuff, work on the foundation. So what do we start working on? We start working on food games. The walk. What else we doing? Place, right? Now remember, those are two different things. Car rides. I mean, we're already stacking up things, right? And all of these are working on calmness. So if we're working on calmness, we wanna start attacking it from multiple areas, multiple angles. Think of it like a puzzle. If your dog is reactive, that's your big yellow balloon in the center of your puzzle. We ain't starting there. We're not starting on the hardest part of the puzzle. Where do we start? Who knows? Where do you start on the puzzle? The edges, right? The edges. Why? They're easy. They have that line. You form the edges. You start getting a frame. And then maybe there's a little face over here or a car or something, some clouds. And you can easily get those. And you start filling in your picture. By the time you get to the big yellow balloon that was your hardest thing, it might've gone away because you worked so hard indirectly from your problems. So remember, most, everybody is here for anxiety. Anxiety and excitement are neighboring feelings, neighboring expressions, right? And it's hard, think about if you had to give a speech or you're starting a new job or whatever it is, coming to class for the first time. You're excited to go, but you're also anxious. You got a kind of a pit in your stomach because you haven't done it before. So your body has a hard time ciphering whether you are excited or anxious. So what I like to do is work in excitement. You might not understand it if you got a happy-go-lucky dog. But if you have a reactive dog or aggressive dog, it's gonna be your best and easiest thing. And that's why you'll see a lot of people with reactive dogs have their shit together really fast. Technically, what's up? Lena? You're like me? Right? So, right? So it, that's right. Well, what's gonna happen is your obedience is gonna be easier than someone with a happy-go-lucky dog. Simply because their pain point isn't as high as yours. And that's fact. So that's why you'll see an aggressive Shepherd over there that used to never be able to even come close to us, now out downtown going to breakfast. Having random dogs come up and smell him. That was wild. And if you were watching Hank, it's really impressive to watch Deb. Now Debbie's gotten into food games really heavily and you can tell. So with bucket adventures, oh, Moki, you wanna come? So there's different levels you're gonna study with your dog. Will they eat in public? Will they stick their head in this bucket? If your dog won't even eat in public, that's where you'll start. So Moki's been eating out of this since she was a kid. She says, I haven't eaten in that one in awhile. She's like, I get free cookies. Mm-mm. She's like, that one's a little too hard. I'm not doing it. And Moki hasn't worked in a long time. Who's been working? Brody. You wanna bring Brody up? Moki. Moki, come. Oh, there you go. Okay. Right? She saw I was moving on and she's like, wait, 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 wait. I know how to get in there. So by, yeah, just hold on one second. By putting her leg in, she was able to get in there cuz she's just shy of being tall enough to reach in. Moki, come. Down. Good girl. That off. So Brody's been coming to day camp, hi, for the last couple months, maybe? So he really likes. So now we're using treats today cuz it's high value and we wanna, we want to see the dogs do it. So most of these dogs would, would work for their kibble too. So you're watching him problem solve. He can just barely reach it. And then you'll see him put that leg in. So good job, buddy. He's like, I got it them all. I got it them all. So something you can do in, is when, you might put a couple, like a handful in. And as their head is in there, so I'll throw one kibble in, get his attention. And then I'll pay while his head's in there. So I might just keep reining his whole dinner in there and be like, damn, what makes her do that? What made her do that? So see the, the foot, right? So now there's different levels. Putting the foot in is one step of problem solving. Now another step is, see, he's like already like, oh, I just go in there. Once he starts to get it. Now another one is when they, did you get those? You got them. He says, I'm fast. When a dog is in and then, I know. They have to pop out to move around the box to readjust so that they can reach the kibbles or whatever the treats. When a dog is able to, thank you ma'am. Appreciate it. Good, good boy, bro. Good boy. He's like, oh, yeah. So now if a dog is in, right? He's got both paws in. And then they're like, they just can't reach a kibble that's close to them, right? So they jump out anxious, readjust, get back in the box and finish the kibbles from where they can reach them, right? Now, as a dog gets more confident, and if you start with a puppy because they don't have preconceived notions of the world, right? So now if they're in the box and they can't reach it, they're going to move their back legs around the box so they can reach. Problem solving, right? Ellie's starting to do that. And, oh, let's bring Ellie out here. She'll be a cute one. So as they get stronger and more confident, come on, baby girl. You're gonna see them start changing and not needing the same. Moki's like, let's do this. Now Ellie was hanging out with us for a couple weeks. Come here, baby sister. She's like, oh, I like this. Down. See Chad built this little puzzle that goes in it. He's very creative. So now with a little dog, you might start, I don't know if you can see here. See her little legs are stretched to the, right to the brink to where she's like, ah, I don't know. It's a little scary. So what I was doing with Ellie was building her a little stairway. There you go. Look, she doesn't even need it. So with a lure, I have the treat or the food in my fingers pinched so she can smell it, lick it. If I have, like, these are zoogs and they're crumbly. So she can take some pieces off them. Then I'm just gonna. So I might, there you go. Now she's gonna make the choice of putting her little paw in there. You gotta make sure you're not doing their homework for them. You're just the wingman. You're just helping. So if you're doing the work for them, you know, it's like doing your kid's science project. Look what my kid built. Well, did they, did they build it? So I'm just holding my hand down here. So if your dog's got their head in here, you might just keep picking up the food and feeding it to them. Picking up the food and feeding it to them. Picking up the food and feeding it to them. Till they're almost pushing you either way like, I don't even need you. I can get in there. Now, when, as they get better, you might be, sorry, Moki. Moki's like, this is crap. You might be shaking like I will put some of the food in the bucket or the box and I'll shake the bowl above them. So there's two birds in the bush and one in the hand, right? So are they looking at me with the bowl or are they trying to get into, into where actually they have food? So now you might turn the box over if the dog is nervous about it, where they can walk in. You might use a big Amazon box, a small Amazon box. Don't overthink it too much. It does not have to be fancy. You're looking through the house and saying, my dog used to be scared of this? Now they can do it, right? Ellie went home and she used to be scared to walk under chairs. And now she, now mom's putting food under the chairs and she's, she's like, I'm going. Good girl. So now the bucket, she was a little bit nervous of because, look, the bucket rolls. Now you got a new distraction. So I might take something and prop it up. She's not sure of this one. And if it's all the way in the back and she's gotta step in it, it's gonna move, right? So it's just little things where she might be stretch, doing the stretch to get in there again. See their, see your back legs, right? And then as she gets more confident, so especially if you start with a puppy, then you can take off one of those. So if you got a dog that's doing that. Be creative. Use your imagination. There's no wrong way. There's no right way. There's just what, whatever you're building with your dog. So if I have a dog that won't come in, see how she's following the lure? Follow her this way, follow her that way. Feed. Follow. Now if your dog won't follow a lure, it means they, they live in abundance. That means they eat too much, you know? So if I have a dog that, that's not sure about coming in here, I might put them all to the edge or I might spill some on the floor there. So, and think closer, think of steps. How many steps back do I need to get, go to have my dog comfortable? Good girl, Ellie. You wanna bring Velves up? Oh, someone brought a pizza and everything. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, eat guys cuz I'm not taking all that food home. Moki. Good girl. The more you do it, the more they problem solve more, easier and easier and easier. Moki, come. Good job, Velves. I'll let it, I'll take it off. So Velvet's been coming for day camp. And she loves mealtime games. She says, oh, she's not so sure about this one yet. She's like, Heather's finally paying me. I've been bowling cookies to Velvet at class. So you're just studying your dog. There's no right place to start. There's no wrong place to start. Moki, down. There's, there you go. Right now you got a rolling bucket. Velvet, no way she would've touched this when she first started. So Matt's been working really hard on mealtime games and even took the box home this week and been playing with it. Let's see how it's rolling, right? Just another distraction. You're just building confidence. I did it and I didn't die. That's what you're doing. I was scared of this and now I'm confident enough to do it. It does not have to be fancy and you don't have to be solving the world's problems. Think small. Think things you already do. You're already playing, you're already using meals. There we go. You see the paw? And there's all this distraction at the park, right? This isn't just in your living room. So you're not gonna start this out in the park. All these dogs have been working on it for awhile. I know. Velvet gets excited and then doesn't know between anxious and excitement. So now for a dog like this, to get her to understand and like the box, I might prop it up something like this, you know, my stuff. You're not gonna have something as awkward as this. This board on the bottom helps it from tipping over. So that lets the dogs put their back feet on this and get in the box without it tipping, which starts to build confidence. So then they can, they're confident enough to do it in a bigger box or bigger bucket. There we go. You want me to get in? I'm not doing it. See, and there's confusion. Here we go. There she goes. Right? And you let her solve the puzzle. It's just puzzles. Now, we call them bucket adventures because, and buckets make it easy to travel with. Box, these boxes are awkward, they're a little hard. But if you get a little bucket, you can take, it doesn't have to be so difficult where they gotta put their feet in it. Take it out. Where will they eat? Maybe Velvet would eat at home, but the second Matt goes out front, she says, uh-uh. Then wasn't that the case at first, right? And now she'll eat at class in front of all you and all these dogs, right? So little changes over the last bunch of months have made a big difference. So let me go grab our muzzle. Yay. Good job. See, Milana does it, doesn't she? Thanks, buddy. Appreciate it. Milana? Milana, come. Milana, come. Good girl. Good job. You wanna do it? So Milana's been doing these a couple years. And what does this do? This starts to build confidence. It starts to build focus. It starts to build impulse control. It starts to build trying new things. She's like, is that grass-fed beef? How about Hanky? Hanky, wanna try? Moki's like, I'm the best girl and I'm sitting right here. Gosh. So now if you got, if you got two dogs and you're working one dog and you got a dog in a down or in a stay, pay that dog that's staying more than you're paying the dogs that are working. Cuz that's more difficult is watching other people work and not joining in. Hanky, poo. And I have a, so I'll start them on smaller boxes to get to the big box. And I'll start them on a smaller flower pot. And then I have a big flower pot to where they have to put their legs in it too. So it just make it just right, especially for the lab size. Did you get them all, Hanky? So now, instead of keeping on stacking more stuff, doing sent work, going to agility, I love all that stuff. But, and really getting into obedience, working on your recall and stuff like that. If you keep on adding things up the list, you're only gonna be able to do a solid foundation and become a master at so many. So make, it's not that you shouldn't add some in, it's get your foundation in right. Get your separation anxiety under control. Make sure you can do separate but together. Hank and mom play this game every day. There's a reason that this team went from being across the park and not being able to be anywhere near us to being one of the main teams in class. Deb went through our program the fastest that anyone's ever gone through. She knocked them out in a year. Oh, like the tubs, like the big Home Depot tubs? So it doesn't have to be a box or fancy. Like if you have one of those tubs, the Rubbermaid tubs or something, open it up. Use it. If the dog can walk all the way in it, that's good. Moki, down. Now there's different mealtime games. So now if we do these, and we keep working them, instead of just getting a little bit and quitting, a little bit and quitting, a little bit and quitting. And we actually do duration and we master some of our things, we're gonna have the best dog that you've ever thought of, right? Look, so look at some of the puppies that are in the group. Bosun, I think, is the only puppy, or Milana, that is, rip, he's a wild man, so. But you, you watch the puppies that have done the work, especially a happy-go-lucky lab, lab golden retriever like Bosun, right? They don't have a pain point that some of us have with aggression or reactivity. And they've done the work. So they're having, now they have a dog that can go to grandma and grandpa and go out to like breweries with them. And get, people want, their old friends want to steal the dog because how do you get a dog that's only two years old to just relax and be this calm? We're teaching them how to be bored in one areas, like when we're doing the separate but together, when we're doing place, when we're doing the car rides, our walks, all that. Get into it. Really study your dog. Talk to me when something's boring. We have our, for our walk, you know, we have our back and forth. When that's boring, talk to me. What's it time for now, right? Leah's out of state and when she goes home, I want her to continue to talk to me. Cuz I can still coach her from afar. What's going on? Send the video of something, you know? Keep in touch with me. So if I don't know what's going on with your team, I can't give you advice. Text me. That's part of this is support. What I needed, right? Carrie and me text, Carrie's my, Carrie's my neighbor and we text and it's, is this going right? Like we just got Ellie off of pee pads and I ripped the Band-Aid off of that and sent her home and, and it's, and she's already now going outside. It took about a day and then she, cuz she's still looking for the pee pads. Cuz she's used to them there, you know? But she's learned that this is the way it's structured, right? So really get into your things and think about duration. These are things you wanna master. These are things you wanna master. The average person is not gonna understand. The average person is not going to understand why you're getting so particular about some of these non-essentials. Why aren't you working on your recall yet? The recall, the come command is a very advanced skill. It takes a relationship. It takes communication. You can force one, but if you want a really pretty one, that's natural, man, this is the way. I don't want to have to tell my dog, "No, stay, stay, stay." Is she perfect? No. We make mistakes all the time. I'm, I'm kind of absent-minded sometimes, so she keeps me in check. It's, I want a dog that can just sit there and relax, right? Because so she works for her meals. So I have a cattle dog. Yeah. I have a cattle dog. I don't plan on getting any cattle anytime soon. I have two sheepdogs at home. I'm not getting any sheep anytime soon. So if you guys have all these working dogs I see sitting here, if you're not planning on, if you're not planning on running the itinerary, Leah, then, you know, we're going to have to look inside your day and find things where you can give them jobs, right? So car rides is our job. If you're already working on separate but together and place, car ride is just another example of being able to utilize something that you do all the time that's very exciting. If you saw, I don't know if everybody knows Rachel and Kilo, the other husky in class. She does barn hunts and different things with them. And when she went, the trainer was like, "What you need is obedience." And she, she was like, "We've been doing obedience." But actually, we weren't. We were doing our foundation work. And then I said, "Well, if you're ready, now we'll start obedience." And that was last year and we started the car ride. And things have just, they go on vacation with that husky. They do all sorts of things with that husky. When she got strict on her car ride, something so simple, something that the average person is not going to understand why you're doing it, why you're obsessed with it, don't be average. Don't be the average dog owner. Be different. Be unique. You will get way farther. The average dog trainer or dog owner is going to work on sit, down, I don't know, shake, something like that. I mean, it's going to be, that's what we get coming, you know, sit and shake. And that's it. And then that's it. And it's like, those are tricks, right? We want to work on, can I go to the vet and my dog not lash out at all the dogs sitting in the vet office? I want my family to be able to come over, we're friends, and my dogs not tackle them at the front door. So we're going to start working their brains. I need to start this one. I have to, she's like, "What?" I have to work her brain. So she works for her meals. She works while she's here. I work during, I look inside my day and I bring Moki and while I teach, she does that. So what do you do during your day that you can do separate but together, right? That's we're together, but we're separate. I can tell who's doing it in class immediately. Immediately. Are you only doing it during dinnertime because your dog's a pain in the ass during dinner? You'll get, you'll get a little bit. Are you only doing it, you know, oh, he doesn't like it. I don't really do it. Only in the moments where you really need it because it's being a pain in the ass in your life? Start thinking outside the box and working on it when it seemingly doesn't matter. My dog is fine when I do dishes. I know, it's not the point. I know that your dog can choose to go lay down while you do dishes and be fine. It probably can. And that's a great skill. But it's a completely separate skill from relaxing because we asked. So that's separate but together. You're not talking to your dog. You're not touching your dog. You're not googly-googling them. You're not telling them, "It's only going to be for 20 minutes. You're fine, you're fine, you're fine." Don't say that stuff. "It's okay, you're fine, it's okay." You know what you're making it? Not okay. Not fine. You're making your words mean not okay, not fine. So save those words, no words, and just do. If you can get an hour in or a couple hours in, this is a good time to do it. Naps on purpose. Naps with purpose. So if you went out and you took your dogs for a long walk and you know they're going to come in and go to take a nap, it's a perfect time for the crate or separate but together. They'll have a little bit of time going, "What the hell? Why are we doing this? This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous." And they're going to be burning mental energy, burning mental energy. And then they're going to get tired of your crap and they're going to sit down. Then they're going to get a second wind and they're going to be like, "No, seriously? What are we doing? This is ridiculous." And they're going to get tired again. And they're going to lay down and eventually they're going to take a nap. I mean, look at all the dogs here. Everybody's in a down. Except Gravity. Okay, so let's talk about some other food games. Let's see. So now, we got the box stuff. And these, just keep in touch with me and we'll come up with new ones. Basically, you're watching for, will they stick their head in there? Will they stick their feet in there? You're not trying to get them to stick their feet in there. You're just making food valuable enough and being the wingman there. So if she won't eat out of it, I'll sit here and feed her like this until she's like, "Wait a minute, maybe I should just put my head in that box." And eventually, they will. And it... And you're looking for if she turns around. So if I get a puppy, like everybody saw Dogo when, when he was there, Casper now, he would get in and he'd turn around the whole box and then bounce up and never come out. That's a confident dog. He's focused. He's not like, "What was that noise? What was that noise?" Look at all those puppies. Nice shirt. Nirvana shirt. So now, so now we got chicken feeding. So now, the box might be on a day that you're busy. So I like to break it up. She's like, "Where are the, all the food?" I like to break it up on my schedule. Or if I have a busy day, I'll do the box feeding because I can throw the food in there and go inside and do my stuff. So do you need to be in the room while your dog eats? There's another one. Is there, can you leave the room? And they're like, "Do, do your thing. I'm fine." That means they, they appreciate their meal. So now, with chicken feeding, you might start, I know Moki will eat them all. So I can, I could put her whole meal down and walk away and she'd eat it. Yeah. I think we talked about it before. Maybe you could take some, uh, so their dog eats raw food. So they might be able to take some plates. Or you said you have those discs, right? Wouldn't that there? It's where you can put a little bit on discs around the house and then let her go, fine. So if I'll, if, in the beginning, I'll let the dog come with me around the house. So if I was, this was the house and, and I'll let them come around with me while I... So they can kind of see what the game is. And as they get better, I might put them in a down or, or on place or something and then tell them free, they can go find it. And if they don't know where all to look, you know where to, you put everything. So what I do is I see what they can find on their own and you're working the nose. You're getting them to start working the nose rather than just use their eyes or just use, right? We want them to start working those senses. So if you're constantly just handing them the food, they don't have to use their nose for anything. So now Deb and, Deb and Hank, she scatters it in the grass. She scatters it around the pool. Yeah. And you get a routine, right? Yeah. I have little puppies, like my seniors, I'll go, I'll put them on the couch and I'll go around and hide those like, well, they'll hunt whatever, but litter treats or whatever. And I'll hide them on, you know, the, the little rail on a chair. I'll put them on there. Or a little table might have a little shelf. I'll put some there or, you know, my filing cabinet had, I could put one right on the handle, right? So we're just getting to where they're, because they're walking around the house like... And they're finding them. So if I know, and then I'll go around and I'll look at all the places that I put them. And if they didn't find one, I'll just stand near whatever it is. Because they're going to be searching and then they're going to come to you like, "Is there more? What are you, what are we doing? Is there more?" So I might bang on the wall where it is. Or you, you know, you might get into where you're pointing in the beginning. But as they get better, you might, you're just kind of giving them a clue rather than doing the whole puzzle for them. So you got chicken feeding. So that might be on a busy, these are busy morning mealtimes, right? You put, I mean, how easy can you get? There's literally, it's not, you can't get easier. Scatter it on the floor or put it in a dang bucket. I mean, there's, there's no excuse not to do homework. If you're just keeping, put them in the bowl, keep putting in the bowl. Do this. Put your head down and do it, even if you don't understand why you're doing it. You're going to understand in about a month or two when your dog starts to get confidence in places that have nothing to do with this. Nothing to do. Right, Ellie? We were working on just jumping off, she was on a shelf on her kennel and we just work on jumping. I would take her collar and just kind of put a little pressure on her. And then when she decided to go forward, I would take, lift her whole body, woo! And we'd jump down. So she wasn't, now, and she can jump. She, you know, she does it when she's comfortable. It's me asking her to do it that was uncomfortable. She was like, "Ah." And now, I opened the kennel and she's like, "Woo, let's go." And now she walks out with Mom and it's not this, she's not this nervous little girl. And it all came from food games. I didn't, we barely went on any walks. We went on a walk downtown where Lena walked her and, but that's really it. She came to a class a couple of times. It wasn't anything extravagant. And in two weeks, 13 days, she shifted, right? She's a puppy, so it's easy, but any dog can do it. So if, then there's the ones where there, I have the videos where you're having your dog on a cot or a bed or a rug or whatever. Moki, come. And then you're calling them to your other cot or your other bed. So these are the exercises for when you have time. It's a Saturday, it's the evening. You're, you're not in a rush. And I can even do these drills in like seven minutes. I mean, 10 minutes. You do not need to be doing these hour-long sessions. We're not, you've got a whole bunch of kibble. Unless your dog is the size of Ellie, you're not doing one kibble at a time. You know, we're not psychopaths here. Take, take your bowl, grab a handful and split it between two hands. So I might have three or four, 10 in this hand and, and a bunch more in this one. And get to know your dog. So a Moki could eat all four of these and probably all 10, if I had 10, easily. Where my dog, Melina, if I have more than three, she takes them all, but then she spits them on the ground. And then, and then it's the whole, like she's stopping to eat them and... So I know for her, don't have more than three. Not that we do this anymore, but she was my main girl for a long time. So I, where Gates, I could have seven and he'd eat his. We do it really fast, you know what I mean? So you get to know your dog. Hank's probably even bigger. So Deb could probably do breakfast and five handfuls and done. It doesn't have to be long and drawn out. It has to be consistent every day. If you miss a day, so what? Move on. Start again. Doesn't mean Sundays they can't eat out of the bowl or something like that, right? Or it's a busy day, we're going to do what we need to do. But how easy is it to just take your, take your thing and dump it in a bucket and have your dog like the bucket so much and you go get ready for work and your dog's eating and, and do, and working without you needing to be there? So will your dog follow you? Okay. Will your dog follow you if you dump it in there and then you go off to the bathroom to get ready for work? Are they, are they like, "Where are you going?" Right? That's something that you're going to work on. You're going to do it so much where you might, and you can't blame your dog for being smart. She looked at me like, "Are you going to solve this for me or what?" Get him. There we go. And she's a nervous little girl. She says, "I'm dainty." Good girl. So now, if it was a big bucket, so we get them used to this bucket where they don't have the need to turn, right? Then I have this big bucket at home that looks exactly the same where if they get in it, they can't reach over there. So they'll have to, you guys remember Harper? She was starting to do that where she'd turn, but then she'd dive out of the bucket and then study it and then get back in that bucket. She's a lab, so she was, you know, she's food crazy like, "Let's do it." But look at Gravity, right? So now, look at your chair. I love your little hammock chair. I've never seen one. That is really cool. Okay, so if we focus on this, you're going to build confidence and strength and impulse control and so many different things that you don't even know you're building just from focusing on something as basic as mealtime. So you got twice a day, put it in the bucket. Get a bucket. Even if it doesn't look like you're doing anything, you're getting your dog addicted to this thing. Where they're like this. "Let's bring this with us." So now, your dog loves this at home and suddenly you're bringing it to class. And they're like, "What? You're bringing that to class? Yeah, let's do that." And they might be like, "I'm not eating that here." Guess what? You just learned something about your dog. They'll eat at home, but not at class. So then what do we do then? Go, go try it at home. Go out front. Will they eat it on the front porch? No? Bam. You just found where your bubble bursts. So you've got like a little bubble of feeling confident and comfortable in their house the second they go outside. If they won't eat outside, that's going to make, that's going to like tell you so much about your dog, about how they feel out in the world. Will they eat out back but not out front? Will they eat out front but not out back? Don't forget out back. Out back's like Disneyland. No rules. Don't do that. So now, you start coming to class. Maybe they'll eat it in the front yard. But if you take it down the street to the little park, not so much. So now, you need to figure out where it ends. Does it end in the driveway? Does it end in the street out front? It's a puzzle. It's interesting. When Matt started this, he would come in and be like, "It's so interesting. This is crazy. She wouldn't stick her head in that pot the other day." And now she's, every time she goes outside, she's like, "Is there anything in that pot? No, just checking. Okay, just checking, no problem." Right? So now, she'll eat in front of the class out of all sorts of different ones, right? And she's on the verge of getting in this one. I just have to be patient and that's okay. And it's, it's getting her to like this thing. Having it propped up, having her be like, "What about that colorful one? I like that color." So this is what it's about. Basic stuff. This is what the average trainer is not going to make sure you're doing. It's not about being mean or, or having to say something. If you can, if you don't have to correct your dog and you can just nurture them into being a confident dog, most of your problems will fall away. And then if there's stuff that's still lingering, then you address that stuff. Rather than correcting your dog for 82 things, because you've got 82 things on your list that are a pain in the ass. But if you start working some confidence, you might get 72, 78 of those things fall right away. But you forgot you even had to struggle with them. I've watched it over and over and over and over again. Velvet is just amazing. She's come in, her walk is, is beautiful. She's actually letting me take pictures of her now lately. She's not growling, you know, she's not like giving me the side eye when I walk by. Because we're building confidence together. We're building confidence. So rather than correct her constantly for having feelings when people walk by or having feelings when things are just uncertain, we work on confidence. Confidence, confidence, confidence. There's a reason Deb and Hank have blown through this course. Blown through it because she worked on confidence. And if you're building confidence in your dog, what you're doing is building confidence in yourself. Because you had the patience to see it through, to see your dog try new things, to study your dog. You know, what, what does your dog do when they're tense? Have you studied their, your dog there? If they're reactive? What are they doing before they react? That's what we need to start watching. Are their ears going down? Are they pinned back? Moki will pin her ears back. See how they're up? She's, she's hunting. Now, if they go back, I know that that's, she's tense. So I need to watch it. Are their forehead wrinkles? Do they have, does their shoulders get tight? Do they make a little whine? Are they staring? Right? You can look, you can look all you want, no staring. So if your dog's staring, move them out. Move them away, make space. Yay, anybody got any questions? No? Anybody, who's been doing this at home? Oh man, everybody. That's what I like to hear. So some people, if you've got a tall dog, some people use five gallon buckets, right? I think Bosun was using a five gallon bucket for a long time. And I was like, my, I don't even think my dogs can do a five gallon bucket. What's up, Lena? Uh huh. The, uh, so you're just watching your tone with your dog? Are you always baby talking them? Do you like, things that I like to, I'd like to narrate for them. You know, they all have voices, they're all, they're all doing fun things and you need to tell you about them. So watch, watch when you're doing that. It doesn't mean that you can't do those things. It doesn't mean you can't have those moments with your dogs. It means, when are you doing it? Is it a, is it the right moment? Is it a tense moment? Are you petting them when they're anxious? When you come together and when you leave, those are moments that you want to make really bland. No, oh puppy, puppy, puppy! Oh puppy, 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 puppy! Gravity's like, I love when you do that. So you, what you're telling them when you do that is that if, there's something wrong with us being apart. So pack, packed dogs in the wild, they stay together. They don't separate. Humans separate and come back together. So we're not living a dog life. So when we express, like we were telling them, bye, I'll leave you 20 minutes. You'll be fine, you'll be fine, I'll be right back, I'll be fine, I love you, oh gosh, I love you, love you, love you. You're telling them something's wrong. You're raising them, their, uh, their awareness, like what's happening right now? And then they get used to it and then every time you do that, you leave. Every time you do that, you leave. I used to do it. Who is that? Gypsy? She says, look, I like that Finley. And then walk her out, Leah. Yep. Just get her, collect her marbles and then come back in. Right? And rather than stay in this, in the moment, you're gonna walk your dog out, collect their marbles and then walk back in. So watch your reuniting and your leaving. Don't make those big things. It doesn't mean you can't say goodbye to them. Do it way before you leave. Do, say hello to them after you've been home for a little while. Take them out to play. Have that stuff going on, not in the moment that you come home. It's making that. And watch, watch your voices, like, I like to baby talk and do all. We call it googly googling now. And it's, what you're doing is you're getting your dog all riled up. And it's moments that you probably don't want that. But we like to see them look like they're smiling. Cause it makes us feel good, it looks like a human. Right? So we want to see them bouncing up and it makes us feel good. So we've had a rough day at work and we're like, you know, we just want to see our dog get like this. And then immediately we got something to do and we're like, no, 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 back, you know, we're calming them down. Rather than just leave them in the state of mind that they were in where they were happy. And calm. So watch your, watch your emotions if you're having a sad day. Don't cry on your dog. You're having a bad day, don't put those emotions in your dog. Find a way to self-soothe on your own. Take a walk. Go somewhere. Do whatever you need to do. Do not put those emotions in your dog. You will regret it. Coming from. Everything that I'm teaching you is something that I've done wrong, wrong, wrongest. And then I had to dig my way out of a big pit of aggression. So it's what I learned is like the happy-go-lucky dogs, like the golden retrievers. You could have the dog that we all dream of, you know, the people that have reactive dogs or aggression. Like we see the, the happy-go-lucky dogs and it's like, man, I'd be, I'd be dreaming of that problems. And, and they, those people won't have the same problems as the aggression people do. Jumping up, being all fruity because the aggression people and the reactivity people have to get that stuff in order. And it's the easier of the things. Obedience is the easier of the reactivity and the dog lunging and all that stuff. It's easy to get my dog to just chill there, no problem. Cause they're on it, they're on it, they're on it, they're on it. Leah, you can come back in. Once, once you collect your marbles, always come on back in. Um, so just watch your tones. What it is, is I, you know, everybody kind of downs people that talk baby talk or have that. It, it's not that. It's a superpower. And we're just abusing it. So if I want Moki to come and she's out there, that's the time I'm gonna use my happy voice. If she starts coming, good job! Good job! I want her to be like, oh man, I don't know what we're doing, but I really need to get back to mom. Cause she is doing that thing. But if you're always talking and baby talk and you're always abusing it, it's not so valuable. And that's why we talk, I mean, we're all alike in these groups, this group. So we all like to pet our dog, we all like to googly google our dog, we all like to baby talk our dog because it's fun. Just to be plain and simple.
You're on a walk and I'm really scary and my dog just nearby and you just go.
Are you in a place where you can't go anywhere? I would start. Right, okay. So what I would start doing? In those moments, get through your day. Right? Do what you need to do, what you can. Don't make her sit and watch the damn thing. Don't do that. It's just causing more stress and anxiety. You're gonna show her that you understand she's anxious and you're gonna make space for her. And then meanwhile, that'll help you get through the day. I know sometimes you might be walking, you might have to get through. But you're gonna work indirectly on building confidence in different areas. And then also making loud noises, fast movement, stuff like that. Find something that's purposeful, like a construction or something like that where you're not in a hurry. And then go and find that. So say, say this is a construction site. And you're gonna find the distance that you can be from that with her. You might be two blocks over, you know what I mean? To where you're, where you can watch it, kind of like class. Where can you be in the class and chill and her relax? Can you be up here or do you need to be way out there? So if it's a loud sound or something like that, I'm gonna hunt those out and I'm gonna find it. Like bus station is a good one, right? If you have a bus station that's close to your house, I will go, there's one right on by my house. I'll go and sit and I just keep sitting them, sitting them. Every time they get up, I sit them, sit them. And then you got things going by and things going by. And the good thing about that is the bus is gonna leave. So you're not gonna be like, it's just not gonna be this long thing. It's gonna be a couple of moments of where she's freaking out and you're going to be sitting her. Sitting her, sitting her, sitting her, sitting her, sitting her. And just keep, don't move. You're sitting there. Find a spot that it's not so overwhelming. And then you're gonna study how close you can get to it. Right? I used to have to be at the fence to that, right? But now we can sit here and noticing the small gains. And being appreciative of them, that's where the magic lies. Everybody's looking for that quick fix, quick fix, quick fix, quick fix. And what this is, is slow and steady. You're gonna study, where can my dog be successful? So if you keep going right next to the truck and they're like, you're flooding the dog. So we'd have, when I first started training, that's, you know, they, that's what they were saying, that's what you should do. And you should do it to an extent, but not, they should be where they can be successful and comfortable, right? But if you go in where dogs were like pooping and peeing because they're just so scared of this thing, right? My first board and train broke me in really good. Where I was like, oh my gosh, yeah, she's still Zoe, she's, uh, yeah, it was a lot. But she taught me a lot and she wasn't about aggression, she was just scared of everything. And so I would study where my dog can be compared to those loud sounds. And with confidence building stuff, you're gonna be working the edges. And then you're gonna, and you're gonna also be working directly with those things and study her. Last week we had to be a block away. Today, we're pretty close. We're pretty close. But always have that. And that starts with sitting your dog every time you're stopped. So you're not only doing that when there's terrifying things going on, you're doing it when no one's watching. The magic is happening when no one's watching. No one's at your house. No one's on your walks. What are you doing on those walks? Are you still practicing the calmness? Are you still looking at that stuff? It's what you're doing when no one's watching. Cause I don't live with you, right? That's why I like group classes and stuff. If I train the dog for you and I hand it back, you don't know why the dog changed. You don't know how the dog changed and you're just managing. And I don't like that for people. I want, I want them to understand the, the wise in the house. And I might do some, you know, some extra. But if you already got the systems in place at home, like Ellie, they were already doing all the work. So when Ellie went home, she's already been doing separate but together. She's already been doing crate, she's already been doing mealtime games. So she was able to pick up right where she left off and Ellie just have a little bit more confidence. That's right. If I start saying I'm gonna kick your ass, it means you're in the family. Yes, right. Anybody got any more questions? Good? Yay, go. Yeah. Yeah, you can just put it right, put the bowl right in there. And then they'll be like, especially you got such a good, that's a good lure, you know? And then she'll be like, ooh, ooh. And just start, if your dog won't put their head in the box, back up a step. Back up a step. Maybe push it out to the side, maybe hand it to them. You want them, I, I'll sit here and be like this. To where they're like, just move, I can get in there, just move. And you just make it, right?